I trust you, but I don't see that much idea. It usually takes a second.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's right.
Okay. I'd like to call the meeting of September 11th to order. It is 6:02 PM. Before we stand for the pledge tonight, I'd like to pause and recognize Patrick as we remember the tragic events of September 11th, 2001. We honor the nearly 3,000 lives lost, the courage of the first responders, and the resilience of the nation in the eyes, in the days that followed. At this time, we ask you to join together in that moment, in a quick pause for a moment of silence. Thank you. If everybody could please stay up for the pledge. Can I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, united in God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all? Chris, can you see it working?
No.
Okay, it's not updating online, sorry. Okay. Do we have any additions to the agenda tonight?
We do not.
I need a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I need a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting on August 14th and the minutes of the board workshop on August 18th.
I'll move.
One second.
Any discussion on those items? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Brings us to the consent agenda. It's 3.1 through 3.2 today. I need a motion to approve the following consent agenda as recommended by the superintendent.
I'll move. Second.
Any discussion on those items? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Brings us to our night light. So we will start there. I will turn it over to Ms. Thomas.
Okay, so tonight, I'm especially happy to present night lights, four of them, to Allison Farrar, Sarah Zogby, Jessica Hoopel, and Althea Brooks. I am so happy to share a wonderful accomplishment by four of our faculty members who collaborated together in an extraordinary way on behalf of our students. Together, at the end of the school year, the final weeks of June, they took the initiative to write and submit a grant through the Disney Musical and Schools Program, which is a highly competitive opportunity that provides schools with resources and guidance to bring high-quality musical theater experiences to children. And I'm thrilled to announce that their hard work and dedication paid off. Our school was selected as a grant recipient. I think it was one of the seven. So to tell you a little bit more about what this is, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I did a little research online, this grant provides performance rights for one year to the Disney Kids Musical and a free show kit of materials, including director's guides and student scripts. And so the value of this is, you know, tremendous. Additionally, when I was talking with Allison, like she's really excited, and I'm sure you guys are, about some of the professional development opportunities that you'll be able to receive through Disney, which is, you know, obviously the most highly regarded probably children's musical theater productions. So I could not be prouder, and I was so excited when I received that email that Allison forwarded me, and I just, like, these are the things I think that really make Hamilton very special because with all of their ideas and working together, and in the end, it's going to benefit our students. So, can you just come on up? And I'll be happy to give you your official certificate. I'm not going for it. You're good or down there? I'm fine. Thank you so much. And, yeah. Thank you. Thank you guys for coming. Yes, like, thank for the superior production, whatever it may be. Thank you costume designer.
Not only did you guys take that initiative, but you found another way to find money to support our students in such a hard budget time, and so using those creative ideas, I really want to thank you for that. The more we can do in multiple different ways, and this is one of those ways, the better our students end up at the end of it. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
That brings us to our superintendent search process overview. I'll invite Mr. Budelman to the podium. Okay. If you guys want to leave, you may.
Not that you're not so much fun. I might go and feel lucky.
Okay.
I'm gonna say no.
Okay, great, thank you. I normally have talked to the board, but the board has sort of asked me to talk to the group about superintendent searches. So I'm Scott Budelman. I'm the district superintendent and CEO of the Madison and the Bosse's. And the board has asked me, has appointed me to be its search consultant, but also has asked me to kind of update you on what that process is going to look like in the next several months. So today, what I want to do is I want to give you an overview of the search process and the timeline. I want to talk to you a little bit about candidate qualifications and some of the decisions the board's already made. And I also want to talk to you about stakeholder participation. Before I do that, I'll just talk to you, tell you a little bit about myself. So I'm the Bosse's district superintendent and CEO. My background's a little bit different. I was an attorney for a number of years, but for the last 24 years, I have, I'm not a practicing attorney for the last 24 years, I've been working at Bosse's in a variety of capacities. My current role as district superintendent and CEO is sort of bifurcated. So the CEO role at a Bosse's is very similar to a school superintendent role. So I function much like Mr. Dousland does, just at the Bosse's level. But the district superintendent job, that's the other part of my job. That's the part of the job that has the search function attached to it. So I specifically, I report directly to the commissioner of the New York City Education Department. I go up there every month, at least once a month, you know, to meet with the commissioner, and she kind of has me do local work with people like Mr. Dousland. And one of the jobs that the commissioner has me doing is superintendent searches, so that's why I'm here today. But again, let me talk to you a little bit about the whole process here. So, well, I'll just back up a little bit. In terms of superintendent searches, there's no cost to a school district for superintendent search. You can do it through a Bosse's, which is one of the reasons why this board's selected to do it through the Bosse's. There are minimal costs associated with maybe mileage or meals or something like that. I don't eat a whole lot. I'm not scheduled to use during meal times, so it's not going to be a problem. Some, like posting and advertising the position, but really, there's no cost for my time. As search consultant, basically, I facilitate the search. I'm not really making any decisions whatsoever. The board is making all of the heavy decisions, all the important decisions, but I will be the person who communicates about the search to the public and to the candidates. And that's important because the board wants just a single voice to represent in the search. So today is the first of six information sessions that I'm going to provide for folks to learn a little bit about the search. The other five will be scheduled at the convenience of a variety of stakeholder staff. So anyway, today is sort of the go over the timeline and the process, talk about the candidate qualifications and stakeholder participation. So in terms of the timeline, July 8th, I sent a letter out to all SAD, just kind of talking to them a little bit about the search. And then again, yesterday, I sent another letter. Today, I'm here talking to you about the process. The anticipated posting date for the job is September 15th. And I say anticipated because sometimes these things get disrupted, so all of this, understand, is anticipated. We're posting jobs September 15th. The anticipated application deadline would be October 29th. And you'll be able to get to all of this information by going to the Hamilton website or the Bosse's website. There's going to be a link between them that contains all of this information. I'll have the job application, the brochure, it'll have information about the search process, it'll have the timeline, it'll have information about stakeholder participation. Eventually, we will push this out, this advertising out. For example, we're going to use social media like Facebook, LinkedIn, other social media. We're going to post it in on board, which is the School Boards Magazine. You'll see sometimes newspaper version of this. The school board members will also go online. We're going to post it on the NISCIS website. So NISCIS is the New York State Council of School Superintendents. That's an association of school superintendents. A lot of folks go there looking for jobs. It'll also be on the SAD's website, which is the School Association, Association of School Administrators. So that's another website. A lot of people go there looking for jobs. It will be on the New York State Association for Women in Administration website. And then on top of that, there are 36 other people in the state who have a job just like mine, that have other Bosse's. And I don't know if folks understand this or not, but every, almost every school district in New York outside of New York City is part of the Bosse's. And so what happens is from time to time, my colleague, district superintendents, my colleagues who work for Bosse's, will send me job postings. And when I receive those, I send them to everybody, including people like Mr. Dousland. I don't know if the board knows that, but he's chosen to stay here the whole time, which is good news. But I circulate job opportunities to superintendents, and that will happen when I send this job to my 36 colleagues, they will send it out sort of as to all 700 superintendents in the state. So we're hoping for a very good pool. So on our, on September 17th and 18th, there's going to be information sessions for staff, and I will talk to them about the process. I will provide them with information very similar to what's happening now. On September 19th, we will launch a community survey, and that will be open, we anticipate, until October 20th. So that's just about a month, so maybe you'll go on the Hamilton website and put in some information about, do you think the next superintendent will trade status exhibit, you know, if you think it's strong about Hamilton, or you think there are areas of improvement. And the board will use all of this as it makes its decisions as to who the next superintendent is. Now, all the time that this is going on, beginning in September and October, even before all the applications are received, I will be screening the applicants. So where the board is making all the decisions, I do a lot of the work on the upfront. And what that means is I will collect all the applications, I'll call references, I'll make sure everybody's licensed, I'll read their written submissions, I'll call their district superintendent, their Bosse's district superintendent, to find out about the candidates. And I will sit down and I will screen, if not all the candidates. I mean, sometimes I don't screen somebody if they're just really, really not qualified. But for the most part, I interview everybody, and I spend between an hour and an hour and a half with each of the candidates. And I take in all that information, I take the information from the stakeholders, and I bring it to the board. So I'm going to be doing that work in September and October, and then in November, sometime in November, I'll be meeting with the board, and I'll bring all of that information to them, and then make decisions about anything that I want to interview. In December, the board, we're anticipating the board will begin its confidential interviews in December, and we hope to have this whole thing wrapped up so that the board can appoint somebody in April, so that they can begin July 1st, which is as soon as Mr. Dousland finishes his tenure here. So that's just the general timeline. This timeline will be posted on the website. It may change. Things happen. People get sick, we have weather events, you know, we may, there may be some change in the pool or something like that. But this is the general timeline, and that's what we're anticipating. Now, in terms of candidate qualifications and board decisions, again, the board will be making all decisions. I'm not making decisions, nobody up here is making decisions. The board is the entity that's sharp at making the choice for the next superintendent. So the qualifications include an SDL, an SDA, that's just the license, school district leader, school district administrator, that's required. The board is looking for a candidate who has readiness to work with a board that has a deep community support for public education, a unified focus on student well-being, a commitment to inclusive and equitable education, a track record of meeting academic standards, a sound financial outlook, and an openness to innovative regional collaboration. So all of this will be on the website and the brochure. Some of the decisions the boards already made, and these are difficult decisions. First of all, they decided to use me as the search consultant, so I'm their agent. But they also made a lot of decisions to sort of be very economical about the process. So for example, there's no consultancy, that's one decision they made. And they also decided to expand the pool as much as possible. So although residency is not required, they have strong preference for residency. But what is specifically required is that the candidate be an active, visible, and engaged member of the community. So they'd really like somebody to live here. If that person does not live here, that person could better feel like that person lives here. As far as experience go, they want somebody with prior superintendent experience or substantial prior work in a school district administrative position. So if you're in a superintendent, or you've been in a central office or a high-level position, it gives you a pool and experience. And the board did this to make sure it has as deep a pool as possible. It's, it could be that after we get the applications, they have all kinds of people with a superintendent experience and other people who don't, and it could be that they sort the applications that way, right? But in the outset, what they want to do is get as many applications as they possibly can. I should also mention to you, I've done several searches, and sometimes you can get highly-qualified people who've never been a superintendent. So for example, the deputy commissioner of the Rochester City School District had never been a superintendent. I did a search a couple of years ago, and the superintendent that came in had never been a superintendent, but he supervised a program of the Syracuse City School District that was bigger than the entire district, although he's now superintendent. So, and also sometimes folks from the State Education Department might apply. So we try not to be too narrow when we're for soliciting applications. Salary range for the position is $165,000 to $190,000, and that's, they're planning that so that they have a decent pool. They're planning stakeholder involvement, so there are going to be a variety of groups. There are going to be parents, students, employees, and a couple of community groups. One of the decisions that the board had to make throughout the process is whether to involve the community directly in the interview process. And I will tell you from experience that when you, when you keep the search confidential, which is what this board has decided to do, you get many, many more applicants. In recent years, I've done a couple of searches. I did an open search not too long ago, there were nine applicants. At about the same time, another school district, not too different in size, I did confidential search, there were 23 applicants. And so what happens is, when you have a completely open process, you know, people who apply have to sort of talk to their board about, hey, you know, I love it here, I want to stay forever, but then I'm also kind of starting this thing over here. And to try to explain that to your board sometimes is disincentive to apply. So this board has tried to get as expansive a pool as possible. What that ultimately means is that when the community finds out, and the first thing the community will hear about the surge, well, I wouldn't say about the surge, but people will hear the superintendent saying, we're all here, it's these three candidates, and these two people, and this or these five. This is an increasing trend statewide, and it's always been the case downstate. So a couple of points of emphasis, just to go over the particulars. We're hoping that the website will be up, including the application on September 15th. The calendar will be up as well. It may vary a little bit, but as it does, we'll adjust it. The board wants your input, so please do the survey and participate in the stakeholder groups. The stakeholder groups are, I have to, I don't think I've ever written them down, but basically, there's a team of administrators, there's a team of instructional folks, a team of non-instructional folks, a group of students, a community leader team, and then also a parent and neighbor team. Now, the board is, the way it's supposed to design is the president of the Administrators' Association is picking the administrator, I've already reached out to that person. The president of the Teachers' Association is picking the teachers, I've already reached out to that person. The parent, the leader of the non-instructional community is picking out the non-instructional folks. The administration's going to pick out a group of students, and the board's picking out community leaders and also the parents and neighbors to participate. So a couple of points of emphasis again. September 15th is the day that the application goes live, and the calendar goes up. The board wants your input. The board's going to make all the decisions. I'll be here a long time, but they'll be making all the decisions. The applications are going to be due October 29th. The salary range is 165 to 190. The anticipation is starting as July 1st. And again, all the information's going to be up on September 15th.
Thank you. We appreciate it, Scott.
You're good, okay.
Same Scott.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
And Scott, as with the other group, you are more than welcome to stay, but if you have other things, like going home for the evening, you are welcome to leave as well.
Well, thank you very much. I do have other things, so. We love the evening. Thank you.
We appreciate you being here. That brings us to our next district presentation, the Capital Project Discussion, and that is happening virtually, so give us just a moment to get that up and going.
Do you see them asking to cover Bill?
Now, I think you can probably leave, Bill, if you want. Or at least mute yourself. All right, you guys hear this, okay?
Yes, thank you. We're ready to go.
Yep.
Great, well, we appreciate your time tonight, and we wanted to give an update since the last time we presented to the group back in February. Tonight, we have the team here. I want to introduce them quickly. Chad Rogers, partner at King &amp; King, certainly a familiar face for all of you. And then also Patrick Costello, who has been working in the district since like 2007-ish, Patrick, right?
Yeah, that sounds right.
So, long time, very familiar with Hamilton. Patrick is the landscape architect on our team, working with Pella Hawthorne, landscape architecture in Syracuse. We really wanted you to hear directly from Patrick on some of this. What we have lined up for you tonight is based on the presentation from February. We thought it would be a good idea to run back through it. I'm not going to belabor any items unless there's something you want to stop me on and we talk about it further, but I, we thought it would be a good refresher. So I'll go back through all those slides. There are minor updates as we go. And then really, towards the end, we have some exciting stuff we want to share related to the bus garage and the site plan that we've been working on. So those are really, the last time we met with you, the really, the two key items that we were charged to move forward with were programming the bus garage, and so really working with the Transportation Department, the district, the Facilities Department, and coming up with what the bus garage needs to house, and then ultimately what that sort of looks like and an overall footprint for it. We then submitted that whole package to the State Education Department. If you remember, we briefly talked about a preliminary submittal that was required by the state, and you had authorized us to take that step. It's non-binding. We've gotten some feedback on that, which has been, for the most part, very good feedback. And then the final item was to put together what's called an environmental assessment form, which was a key item that Patrick worked on, and that is all tied to the SEACR process, which we talked about last time as well. So with that said, I'll jump right into this presentation, and we're going to touch on all those items more as we go through this. That's all, well. Great, is it full screen? Yep. Okay, great, thank you. All right. So here we are. See, between things, I messed around with everything, and now, okay, here we go. So again, the agenda. Again, go through the project scope, some minor updates on the cost, very similar to what we presented back in February. We'll talk about the timeline from this point forward. We're getting very close to some key, some key milestones, and then a few next steps, and questions and discussion at the end. Again, we continue to talk about and recommend two propositions. The first one really focused around the K-12 school building, the second one, both bus garage and really site master planning, and a lot of the bigger maneuvers that will really help address and alleviate traffic, site, and safety issues, as particularly during student pickup and drop-off. All right, I thought it was funny as I went back through all these photos that everything has snow in it, so sorry to show you a bunch of snowy photos here, but you'll get the idea here. So again, at the, at the main stadium, the intent is to replace the field lighting with LED fixtures. Our goal is to do that without replacing the entire pole structure. We will do some analysis of those poles to make sure that they're structurally sound and durable for the long term, and if so, we'll replace LED heads right on it. If needed, we do have funds built into the project at the moment to do a more intensive replacement, but we'd prefer to continue to use those poles if possible. Moving over to the baseball field, it's really infield renovation, so that includes drainage, the clay infield, new sod is needed. We'll also replace fencing, gates, backstops, the dugouts, scoreboard, all those items. So really, a new baseball field to try to bring this up into a more usable condition. The bus loop, so as part of this, again, we talked, two propositions. I failed to mention, the intent would be, proposition two would be contingent on proposition one passing. So depending on how the vote goes, you could have a scenario where you're only doing work at the K-12 school. So with that in mind, we have the bus loop as part of this initial piece. And the intent here would be to rebuild and repave the bus loop and address a lot of the potholes and sinkholes and everything else that are happening out there. This is certainly well past its useful life. Now, you'll also note, I added an extra note here, that additional modifications are included as part of proposition number two. And so we'll jump into those as we get further along here. Again, a real push for this project beyond safety and security is cleaning up and reorganizing the exterior of the building. Great opportunity at low cost to either relocate or better conceal these dumpsters. And right next to them, the ramp into the maintenance shop down below is original to the building and in very poor shape, so we would rebuild that as well and work on drainage, et cetera, so that water's not coming back into the building at this point. Around a lot of the existing entrances, you'll notice a step. And so obviously, the goal would be to make all entrances handicap accessible by building those up and regrading out from the building as needed, so that any entrance/exit primarily exits, particularly in emergency scenario, someone can exit the building and get to wherever a safe gathering area is. As we continue to sort of reface the building, as you remember, a lot of these window systems are really old. We've been talking about that. For those of you who have been around, really dating all the way back to about 2020-ish, 2019 timeframe, just noting that the windows are getting old and it's time to start to move around the building and replace them. So this is, this was started with, and sort of the look and the tone of what the exterior of the building could be, was really started with the renovations at the library and the LGI, and sort of that appearance, and the green, green-toned panels that are on the outside of the building now with those new window systems. So this is a great opportunity to continue that idea and start to work around the building in a few phases, just to manage the cost better, but to ultimately begin to modernize the look of the building, and certainly, most importantly, install windows that work well, have screens in them so that they can be opened and not let all the bugs in. And then a real key piece is the thermal comfort inside by providing more or better insulated windows. So this area that we would do here is really the elementary wing or the, I guess, primary wing is the right term. And so it's two stories on the back and then the one-story wing that would be to your right-hand side as you're entering the main entrance to the building. Speaking of the main entrance, again, always focused on both safety and security, we have an opportunity to further enhance your secure vestibule. By going from a sliding glass window to a fixed window with, you know, you can have what they call like the speak box, like a microphone through the glass, it would have a tray, so that you could slide papers underneath or IDs, whatever's happening that's small. It would also have a parcel box on the side, this is optional. Some districts love the parcel boxes, others find them cumbersome, but we can certainly, as we get into programming with the district, we can talk about further options. But just wanted to show the intent and the upgrades towards your secure vestibule. Further, safety and security upgrades include replacing your PA system and that would be, and starting to really integrate all systems into an IP system, which allows mass notification, blue light systems, so lockdowns, and obviously we'll continue to replace the fire alarm incrementally as the budget allows. But again, really providing the next level of notification, mass notification, and safety systems within the building. This would also include a blue light system around the perimeter of your building, so anyone outside would be able to be alerted that the alarm has been triggered inside. A big focus of the project and one of the larger areas, most intense renovation areas, is the auditorium, which again, a lot of systems well beyond their useful life. And so we're talking about replacement of stage and house lighting, all rigging, sound systems, your assistive listening system, and a big piece, which hopefully everyone really appreciates, which is adding air conditioning to the space. The seats are circa 2008 or '09 and in very good condition, and so we will save the seats and we'll protect them and work around them, or remove them and reinstall as needed. So really a significant facelift to the auditorium, an opportunity to modernize it and, most importantly, to install newer systems, make sure, particularly with rigging, make sure we're installing modern systems that have all safety features built in. And again, a great opportunity for students to be utilizing all of these systems, both particularly back of house and great learning opportunities for them to be involved with all of that. And so we look forward to this area and exploring with the district what it could be. You know, obviously, we'll work within the shell of the auditorium. This is not an opportunity where we're talking about increasing seating or expanding flight towers or any of that. We're going to be reasonable, live within the footprint we have, but certainly provide some upgrades. Going into the main gym, the glass block has certainly exceeded its lifespan, so opportunity to put a different product in those large areas, something that again, would still diffuse light and be really durable for that gym setting for whatever may be thrown up against it. We would also refinish, re-sand and finish the floor as well. Moving into the elementary gym, replacing a few key components in there, bleachers, basketball hoops and a control system that just makes it far more user-friendly to deploy all of those items. We'll also add a retractable batting cage, again, all controlled through a central control panel, or actually, these days, you can do it from an iPad even, or probably your phone. So great systems that, you know, technology has really integrated into all these areas now and is commonplace. All right, the cafeteria, the greenhouse has served the district well and goes back to the late '90s, I think, but it's an opportunity now with the age of that greenhouse system, it's an opportunity to rethink this area. So we say replace glass greenhouse structure and we would, once we get to design, really explore what that means. It could mean replace it in kind, but I think we also leave the door open to explore what else could be there. Also in the cafeteria, remove the stage and update the interior finishes. Next door, the kitchen, again, very outdated equipment. This is a great opportunity to renovate this entire space. As I mentioned last time, if you renovate the entire space at the same time that you replace your equipment, which is really the driver here, then all of it, including the equipment, is eligible for milligate. So really key to link those two things together. So it's a full renovation of the space and replacement of all equipment. Moving into the interior of primary wing, a couple of key areas we want to update, the lockers, certainly get wider lockers in that people can actually put boots and other things in without having to stack them in weird ways. Classroom flooring becoming problematic. The casework literally dates all the way back to the '50s and is original to the building. Time to be replaced. And then update the finishes and the actual toilet fixtures within the, I think there's four classrooms that have toilet rooms within the room itself. Moving over to the third through fifth grade wing, we are talking about replacing unit ventilators, which are the heating systems, the heating equipment that's under the windows. So some equipment replacement work, similar to what you saw done in the last project, particularly I'll point out like the middle school and high school wings where we put the vertical unit ventilators in. A really nice update without going to a completely different system within your building, so we can still utilize piping, et cetera, and the boilers and all. Obviously, we've been switching over the building from steam to hot water through several phases now. And so a great opportunity to put new equipment in. It distributes the fresh air around the room better, they're quieter, so a great improvement from, you know, and both health and just the acoustical environment for teaching within. So big improvements. Big safety item are the welding stalls in the AG suite, and so we would be updating those, providing proper ventilation and safety systems around them. So really, as what you're looking at here is pretty dated. And ventilation is definitely very inadequate in this area. Right next to that area, the greenhouse, which originally constructed in 2008 or so, a key thing we learned was it really is an upgrade and a nice control feature to have your own independent heater in this case, not be tied to the boilers and not have to worry about what happens if the boilers are turned off or on even. And so a lot more local control at the greenhouse so that they can control the temperature exactly how they need. And then finally, within the K-12 building is replace your elevator cab and machinery, which again, has served its life and is really time for some more major maintenance. Okay, let me just pause there real quick and just ask if there's any questions related to that piece, otherwise I'll move right into proposition two.
Yeah, I don't know if you, can you hear me?
Yes, certainly.
I'm wondering if you could talk about the AC that's coming in, that would be in the auditorium, what's the system like, what's the, how do we, how do we get the most efficient system in terms of that AC unit?
Yeah, great question. We certainly had some thoughts on a few different systems that would work, but at this early stage, we haven't necessarily picked one and we would want to include the district in those decisions. And so know that you have a few options. We certainly, our engineers are very focused on both sustainability and efficiency and sort of the third leg of that stool is ease of maintenance and durability, so that what we set you up with ultimately is easy to take care of. It's not, well, you get the idea. So, you know, we've seen a lot of districts, we end up with some sort of condensing units outside, and then from there, we can talk about basically how are we moving, because the whole point of air conditioning, we're moving heat out of the way, so how do we do that most efficiently? These systems typically are electric. We certainly, this is not necessarily a good fit or an opportunity to go to geothermal. If we were doing building-wide heating and air conditioning at the same time, linking heating and air conditioning, I think that would be on the table. But since we're really looking to air condition one specific space and we're not really talking about replacing your main boilers or anything like that, I think we'll net a series of systems with the district as we get further into this.
Thanks.
I sort of danced around that, did I? And I don't want you to feel like that I'm not giving you a full answer, do you feel like I was adding?
No, yeah, that's helpful to know, we'll keep following along with it, yeah, thanks.
Yeah, yeah. So I mean, and this is the thing with getting projects ready at this level is it's, the state does not allow districts to have us dive deep into design stuff, so they really want voter approval before any funds are really expended figuring out the details of design. So sometimes it puts us in these awkward spots where we're trying to answer detailed questions, but we haven't been authorized to move forward with that yet. So that's why I dance around that a little bit. But know that we will go through a full design process with the district and, you know, particularly Randy, and just so that we're, what we're providing is the best fit for the district.
Yeah, that's helpful, thanks.
Sure. All right, so proposition two is very exciting, probably some of the biggest moves on the site here. It's remove your old bus garage, it's a new bus garage located in a far better location, and then it's all the traffic upgrades that are directly tied to that and are available by that key move of getting rid of the old bus garage. So I'm going to move through a bunch of slides and sort of pinpoint things in isolation, and then we're going to, as quick as I can get through that, we're then going to pause and look at a site, we'll talk through is how all this goes together. So, here we go. So obviously, the bus garage, it's ancient, so we're going to demolish it. It's also in a really awkward spot in the middle of your parking lot and creates a lot of traffic problems. So we're talking about demolishing the bus garage, a new building, the new building also containing toilet and concession spaces specifically serving the stadium, since right now, really the only place people can go for toilet facilities is back to the old bus garage, and even what's there is not properly sized for the amount of people that you would normally get at one of your events. So a great opportunity to better read code and meet people's needs while they're at athletic events. Parking across the whole site, obviously, these lots are in rough shape and probably getting worse with every winter that goes by, so definitely well past their useful life in years and really an appropriate time. And again, all this is really all linked together so that you're getting, you're doing everything advantageously at the same time. In the back corner, there's some storage sheds, it's sort of key to the whole master plan to remove them, besides the fact that they are fairly old and in rough shape. The fuel tanks, again, reaching in, they're useful life, a great opportunity to locate that fuel station where it makes the most sense in the new layout. And then back to the K-12 building for a moment, really moving this generator, again, part of what I talked about earlier with the dumpsters of cleaning up the exterior of the building. You'll see in a second when Patrick starts to talk about the site plan, how moving that generator, again, with sort of the focus we're putting on pedestrian traffic and all around this area, it would be really nice to not necessarily happen there. The generator also, I feel like a broken record, it's beyond its useful life, it's actually been on, it's been a potential in the last two projects and just did not, at those times, not wise to the level of being included in the project. But again, it's probably time to replace it, and it's a great opportunity to switch over to natural gas at that time. Right now, it runs off of, yes, diesel fuel, so. So with that said, I'm going to let Patrick, I'm going to pause here and then let Patrick really jump in. I will, with my, I don't know if you can see my cursor or not, but I will sort of flag it over areas as he talks and we can work our way through this whole site plan.
So this is kind of a big step here, but I think we've really improved the circulation across the site. I'm going to start towards the left of the plan at the current bus loop where it comes into the site, and what we're looking at doing is really switching things up, and that bus loop essentially would become a dedicated parent drop-off loop. So we, you know, we work with a lot of school clients throughout the state and some of the biggest challenges that we have is separating bus traffic from parent drop-off traffic and from parking lot traffic. So by isolating the parent drop-off into that bus loop, we can actually provide some dedicated handicap and visitor parking spaces right at the front of the building and really keep those vehicles separate from the bus traffic. So you're probably asking where the bus is going. So one of the other things that we've done here is we've realigned with these, the generator moving and that fuel tank moving, we're able to realign the entrance drive so that you eliminate the jog that you get to go around the back of the building. And that really kind of cleans up the alignment along the building and that allows some flexibility. So, I can't remember, we had, so we had 60 drop-off spaces and nine visitor parking spaces in the student lot. And then along the entrance drive, I've got parking shown just like you currently have it today, and we've able to expand that to approximately 15 cars with this schematic. And then down along the bottom of the main parking lot, kind of on your way to the softball field, is where we've got the bus drop-off spaces. So that would be eight Chevron-style bus parking spaces. Now, for the students to get access to the school, they would essentially cross an elevated crosswalk, which is a concrete crosswalk that is at the top of curb elevation, so it lifts pedestrians up six inches of the ground into the air, sorry, and allows a stop sign on each side of that to give them dedicated access around the front of the building into the front entrance. And that is all connected by a sidewalk essentially. And that is all connected by a sidewalk essentially. So that is really the only place that we want people to cross to get into the building. So by pushing the bus garage back, I know you've talked about it before, we've really been able to expand the parking count significantly. We had 145 spaces approximately existing on the site and I'm able to get 160 spaces in that main parking area plus those eight bus parking spots, drop-off spots. And then in addition to it, as we kind of work past, we've got the storage barn, old barn being replaced. And then we've got an additional eight bus parking spaces there. And it's off the edge of the parking lot, so it provides access for future charging for whatever comes of that. So then moving closer to the bus garage, the new bus garage, we've got it located essentially between the parking lot and the stadium. But really, it allows us to provide some improved accessibility to the softball field, to the stadium, with a good spot for that concessions area and bathroom facility. So I think, I hope, this really opens up your site tremendously and we've had a, we went back and forth with, I don't know, four or five options to get to this point over the last couple of months. And I think we're all pretty happy with how we've landed here. And I think the important thing to recognize is that the student drop-off loop, the parent drop-off loop at the front, is designed, I've tried to design everything so that it has the most flexibility so that if needed, you can get a bus in that front bus loop, get it turned around and out, as well as the drop-off where these 15 parking spaces are along the base of the curb where cars park now. So it really gives you a lot of flexibility for your site in the future. That's kind of a quick spiel, I'm not sure there are questions here.
Yeah, I mean, I think the key things that, a lot of feedback from the district and just, again, trying to reduce the amount of traffic and backlog on Kendrick. And so I think the key pieces were, Patrick said, isolating parent drop-off, bus loop, bus drop-off area, making sure that when the buses are in the parked and unloading mode, that cars can still enter the site and park. Students can park back here, sidewalks all the way across. And so we're pretty excited about this final layout. So with that said, we can pause here if there's immediate questions or I will show you what the actual bus garage floor plan looks like.
How much of the bus, the green circle in the middle is taken away from where it is currently? And we have a couple of memorials in there, so are those affected by this drawing? Was I loud enough? Sorry.
Yes.
Yeah, the space is reduced, so we're essentially adding, I think it's around 20 something feet now and we're going to like 50 feet wide, so we are expanding the width of it. And then we will be losing a few trees, you can kind of see them in the shade if you look close. I left the tree so you can see kind of the existing layout there. So we will have to deal with that to make this a reality. And we've, you know, encountered that before on many school sites with dedicated trees, with planting a new tree. We've even, I found, we relocated a tree with success. So there are some ways that we can work through that process.
Thank you.
Great. Also, I failed to mention earlier, and Patrick, thank you for touching on it, we do have thoughts about future bus electrification, how to bring additional electric infrastructure on the site and install that in this grass strip area on the north side of the parking lot so that we're not disturbing new paving. And so we just want to give you some assurance that we've really thought this through and are taking steps that you won't have to undo later on. The other item is, we do have, the green box here is a new cold storage old barn. But also tied to that is there's bus parking here, so this is like nighttime parking for buses. Again, potentially future charging stations in the grass right out in front of it. And then this area would actually be a covered area. So again, we recognize that right now you're able to park your buses inside. That's not something that SED is willing to provide building aid for anymore. And so we wanted to provide some sort of accommodation for buses and giving them some level of covering, particularly in the winter at home, so. So again, we're gonna zoom in now on the bus garage, just to orient yourselves.
I have one more question if I can before you.
Oh, yeah.
Move on.
Please.
I'm just looking at the elevated pedestrian crosswalk and I'm thinking about the craziness when school gets out and how many kids are coming out there. And like, you know, seven-year-olds having to stay on the pedestrian crosswalk. So how, how do you prevent traffic really from coming in when the kids are coming out? That looks like a really small area. Is there, is just the white part the sidewalk there and they all cross at that elevated crosswalk? To get to the buses where they're parked?
Yeah, that would be a dedicated crosswalk, so. Actually, do you want me to, I have a picture, I took a picture of one last week that was just built, so you can get an idea. Do you want me to try and share that, Paul?
Sure.
Yeah.
Are you looking at the white area that's like vertical looking at the?
Yeah, I was looking like, you know, if this is the elevated pedestrian crosswalk where all the kids are coming here? So they would still exit the building where they do now and have to walk around here and cross just in that one dedicated area? Okay, oh, okay, yeah.
So this is kind of, this was just installed at OHM BOSI's up in New Hartford. And it kind of shows you what it would look like. So the, it acts as a speed bump in addition to being a crosswalk rather than have the crosswalk at pavement level. Essentially picks it up that six inches. And the speed bump also has a stop sign on each side. And it's a, you really feel it when you drive over it, so it does really slow traffic down. And it gives the students the, you know, prominence that, and whether you have an SRO or something there to help control that traffic at dismissal times. I anticipate a lot of vehicles will not be coming from the back parking lots when students are, you know, be crossing this area. And by keeping them on the other side, the students that park there can get out through the front without disturbing this, this crosswalk at all. Hope that helps.
Yes, thank you. Paul, is it possible to get this emailed to us? Like, from where we are, it's really hard for me to see this. Is it possible to get the presentation emailed so we can look at it closer?
Absolutely.
Like afterwards, obviously not right now.
Yeah, late in the day, I sent Bill and Matt a PDF of this, so they can certainly share it. If you, if you want this site plan in a larger format, we can get you whatever you need, so that's not wrong at all.
Thank you.
Okay, so let's move into the bus garage for a minute here. Again, just to orient you, because when I flip to the next screen, it's gonna be rotated to the left. So sort of the wider area here is the bus portion, bus maintenance phase. And then the narrower end, which on the next screen will be on your right-hand side, is the concessions and toilet area. So here we go. All right, so I'll just quickly orient you through the bus garage here. It's labeled, I think it's pretty self-explanatory. But starting at the left side, we have a bus bay that's specifically for bus washing. So again, imagine like, you know, sort of the older car washes with the hand wand. That's what we intend in this bay. Moving the next, really three bays over, additional bus and vehicle maintenance bays, so, and storage areas. So items like topping off, oil checking, air pressures, et cetera. I realize that the district utilizes BOSI's for intensive maintenance, but there are still maintenance activities that happen within the district. So spaces for all of that and any other ways that might be useful to the district. Nice wide-open area, well, we have overhead doors primarily on the front for entering, but also on the back for deliveries or anything else you may want to be moving in and out of the building. So this wall really is a good delineation between the sort of auto side, mechanic side, if you want to call it that, to more office area. So everything in green is really dedicated to the transportation offices. So the director, the bus drivers, et cetera. So you get a secure vestibule when you come in, the director's office, really off the reception area, small break room for bus drivers, lockers, mail, et cetera, for their needs. Again, toilets around the spaces in the gray. Then a training room, which really could be multipurpose. There's certainly bus driver training activities that need to happen at times. It also could be multipurpose. As you see right next to it, we're identifying a team, sort of a team room, just really a simple space for halftime for soccer team or anyone else to be able to get off the field and come right over here versus potentially having to go all the way back to the building. This room could really act as that second team room as well. And so a lot of flexibility in our layout here to meet whatever your needs are at that time. Again, some additional athletic storage. And then, as I mentioned before, two sets of toilet rooms as we continue to move right across the screen. Men's and women's. A family or non-gendered toilet room as well. And then finally, a concession space with ticket window and a concessions window right off the end, large canopy over the whole area. And if you saw in Patrick's site plan, we're back briefly, but really that whole end, sort of a large gathering area. So the ability to create like a nice gathering area and a clear, really user-friendly entrance into the stadium or towards the softball fields, field, et cetera. So this has been submitted to the State Education Department and approved. And so we're very happy that they felt like the district provided a reasonably sized garage for your fleet. And they have agreed to pay, that it warrants building aid for everything directly related to transportation. Against everything in green, gray, and blue and the white hallway. We knew that they would not provide building aid towards concessions and toilet rooms, even though the toilet rooms in particular are code requirement. So obviously, we knew that was coming, they have stated that. So they've noted that about 18% of the building would not receive building aid. They've actually, we've gone back to them for clarification and to make sure that they're not, or we're certainly trying to make the case that they've not applied that same 18% number against all the other site work. We feel the appropriate number is more like 3% against the site work. So that is still being negotiated, but I would say we're 90% of the way there with approval. And really, the big steps are we have secured in writing that SED will provide building aid for both the demolition and the construction of the new bus garage. So that's really great news. And that's not something that we knew or could guarantee back in February. We pause there briefly. Any other thoughts or questions about the bus garage or anything else we've talked about at this point? Otherwise, I'm gonna transition into the proposed budget and then the timeline, and then we're set. All right, well, I'll keep talking and feel free to ask questions about anything as we go here. We can move back for sure. So very similar slide to last time. So we have Proposition One, Proposition Two. Proposition One, we're looking to utilize your entire maximum cost allowance. And so we're very aware of that date when your maximum cost allowance resets. So we will, we have sort of aligned both this vote and our subsequent, submitted to the State Education Department with full design to align with that date in early 27, I think. January of 2027. So again, the K-12 school is, it's about 91% A-able. We've fine-tuned these numbers and these percentages based on, and I don't want to get too far into the weeds because it just gets confusing, but know that the district's fiscal advisor has been involved and we've looked at site work, et cetera, and how site work impacts these numbers. So you're still at a good spot with 91% A-able and maximizing the maximum cost allowance. The bus garage and other upgrades that we talked about, that's all site work. The great thing about bus garages, there are no caps. And so you don't have to necessarily jump through as many hoops with the bus garage. Overall, we're sort of showing worst-case scenario at 86% A-able right now. Again, we have gone back to the State Education Department and are trying to negotiate a better number. But for the time being, as we've always discussed, we're going to present sort of conservative numbers to protect the district and to make sure that everyone can deliver what the public votes on in the end. If you don't need the money, you don't need to borrow the money, you don't need to spend the money if things come cheaper. I think we've had all these conversations in the past. I just want to continue to remind you that, again, this will all be designed publicly, pinned in the end. And we can always hope that things come in better than what our escalation factors are assuming at the moment. So again, a total project of just under $40 million. The cost share is, you know, at year 76% A ratio is, and again, factoring in all the other, you know, so it's 76% of 91%. So I think we really get deep into the weeds here, but it's roughly $27 million's New York State building aid to the district and then local share for the district is $12.8 million, inclusive of both propositions. So moving on to timeline and next steps. I think I hit on these briefly earlier, but currently in process. We continue, we sent in our preliminary sebeto, we're negotiating that building aid piece. We're working with fiscal advisors regarding final costs and financial planning for the district and for the overall project. And then finally, the SEACER process is really at its final stages. The environmental assessment form has been sent to all interested agencies for their review and comment period by the district's authority. So here we are in September, according to you, and we promised back in February. So the next key steps, if we are to continue marching forward with this process, is in October, the board would pass a formal resolution for both the project and establish the vote date and also the SEACER resolution identifying the district as the lead agency. That would then keep us on course and allow a December referendum, which, you know, we've been talking about for, I think, dating all the way back to 2023. So again, we're getting closer and closer to that date. We want to make sure everyone is comfortable with that and understands these steps. We need to there. So that's really the end of our presentation here. So I open it up to comments, questions, concern, anything we can help you with today.
Anybody? We good at the moment? I think we're okay at the moment. We'll feed our questions to Matt and Bill if we have any as we process all of this information. But at the moment, nobody is ready other than me to speak, so you get me.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. We certainly recognize and acknowledge that it's like drinking from a fire hose here. And just like last time, you get me talking and I just churn through this stuff, so.
Well, thank you. Really appreciate the time you guys provided for us tonight and in the work leading up to this evening.
Glad we can help and look forward to wherever you go with us. So thanks again.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Sounds like one of the most information-packed first hours of a meeting we've had. So on that, it opens the floor to community participation. We're at seven point one. Please remember, we do have a time limit and other policies to follow if you come to the podium. I'm hoping not to have to read this, but I will if I need to. So if anybody would like to come to the podium now, it is open.
Hi, my name is Maura Tompkins. I've done this a couple of times, but I always feel like I'm going to pass out. So this is connected to the timeline for the superintendent search. And so I wanted to start by saying thank you to Mr. Dousland. And I know that you all are not allowed to respond to anything I say, which is weird. But I appreciate that even when, oh, and I just violated the policy since I named a person, sorry. Anyway, okay. I appreciate opportunities at HCS to be heard, even when people disagree. So I just wanted to ask respectfully the board to take the opportunity presented by the superintendent's search and all the work that you will do on the search, but also, I'm sure, to be doing onboarding for a new superintendent, to think in really big-picture ways about concerns that may have come to you and other administrators over the years from parents and community members who are concerned about the academic strength of the experience at HCS. And to think in just really big-picture, outside-the-box ways about different ways of responding to some of those concerns because sometimes the response is something like that just nothing can be done. And I understand some of those reasons, but it can be frustrating as a parent. So I'm just hoping that some of the concerns that I know have bubbled up over the years around individuation, around specific areas where it seems the learning experience is not as strong as what HCS would hope for. And I know that because you're not allowed to say anything, my next example, you might all be able to tell me is totally false and you're not allowed to tell me. But I've heard through the grapevine that Math 6A is not happening this year. And I have some concerns about that just because that is one of the moments when HCS is thinking about individuation and thinking about a strong science and math track heading into the rest of middle school and high school. And so that's just like an example of something that concerns me. I can follow up with an email in which I have some suggestions, but they're less specifically linked to the superintendent's search. And I know the policy is to link to the agenda. So I just wanted to emphasize that this seems a unique moment when some of the concerns that have been expressed in emails and private conversations over the years, it's like a chance to think like, are there ways to actually move forward on some of these things that have been really stuck for a while? So thank you, and I'm so sorry I violated the policy for the first thirty seconds, but it's my attention.
Anybody else at this moment? Anybody daring in the back? All right, I just wanted to give you the chance again. Grateful.
Can I just say something about the search in general? Just that we really are interested in as much community feedback as possible. We will have, as Scott said, some forums for people, for certain people to share. But the survey is open to everyone and we are very open to any direct emails that you send to the board. We'll take all of that into serious consideration as well. We're very interested in as much feedback as we can from the process.
Thank you. Eight point one, personnel. Here we go. I need a motion to approve the advisors and volunteers for twenty-five, twenty-six fall play as provided for contractual language and is recommended by the secondary principal and superintendent.
Remove.
Second.
Discussion would be an executive session. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I need a motion to approve the appointment of Shelley Mayer as probationary part-time teacher A-plus A effective September twelfth, as outlined in the recommendation form and is recommended by the director of PPS and superintendent. Second. Discussion would be an executive session. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I need a motion to approve the revised appointment of Lisa Nguyen as a part-time food service helper. Increase position from point seven to point nine, effective September twelfth, as outlined in the recommendation form and is recommended by the business manager and superintendent.
Remove.
Second.
Discussion would be an executive session. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Need a motion to approve the revised appointment of Samantha Simchin as a part-time food service helper. Increase in position from point seven to point nine, effective September twelfth, as outlined as a recommendation form and is recommended by the business manager and superintendent.
Second.
Discussion would be an executive session. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Need a motion to approve the appointment of Cassandra Case as a probationary part-time teacher A bus A, effective September twelfth, as outlined in the recommendation form and is recommended by the director of PPS and superintendent.
Remove.
Second.
Discussion would be an executive session. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry, I have reading issues tonight. Need a motion to approve the appointment of Elizabeth Unger as a probationary school bus driver, effective September fifteenth, twenty-twenty-five to September fourteenth, twenty-twenty-six, as outlined in the recommendation form and is recommended by the business manager and superintendent.
Remove.
Second.
Discussion would be an executive session, but I am curious of the dates. One year, it's probationary year, gotcha. Thank you. Unlike, the school year is not even those days. I have a quick email. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I need a motion to approve the addition of Samantha Johnson as a substitute list for the roles of teacher A, teacher, bus A, and assistant, and to add James Taylor to the substitute list for the role of bus driver, school vehicle only, as recommended by the principals, director of PPS and superintendent.
Second.
Discussion would be an executive session. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Need a motion to approve the recommendation of the committees on special education and preschool education?
Remove.
Second.
Discussion would be an executive session. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Need a motion to accept the certification, certification of Heather Thomas, Mark Pat, Chris Rogers, and Kevin Ellis as APRP lead teacher evaluators for twenty-five, twenty-six school year, as recommended by the superintendent.
Remove.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Need a motion to accept the following monetary donations with sincere appreciation and to increase the budget by these amounts, as recommended by the business manager and the superintendent.
Second.
Thank you to the Hamilton PTO, the Hamilton Sports Boosters for both donations. Other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I need a motion to approve Hamilton's participation in the following combined sports programs for twenty-five, twenty-six school year, as recommended by the athletic coordinator and superintendent. It is varsity girls' ice hockey combined with Clinton Central School for a tentative of one student.
Remove.
Discussion?
Thank you to Clinton.
All those in favor? Oh, go ahead.
Absolutely, yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That brings us to the information and correspondence. We have a verbal superintendent's report.
Yeah, I just want to start by thanking and commending our entire team for a very smooth opening. We've had a terrific opening to the school year. I want to commend our students for their follow-through with our cell phone policy. They've been terrific. They've complied. They're decorating their cases. It's worked really well. It was well thought out. It was well executed. So thank you to our administrative team and for our faculty and staff for the rollout, for the pre-communication. The expectations were set and our students are following them. And I really appreciate that because I know Mr. Arquette has been at some meetings with some principals in the region and it's not happened that smoothly at other districts. So I just want to thank everybody and absolutely thank our students for their compliance with that. So thank you for everybody. Playground. So today, we had a tree specialist come and trim some of the dead branches on the big tree by the playground and also our trees out by our stadium field. So those are cleaned up. So some safety hazards have been eliminated, so we're happy about that. Some state ed updates. Dual enrollment standards and equity measures. So the New York State Board of Regents has proposed statewide regulations to raise rigor in high school dual enrollment programs. So they're looking at dual enrollment programs that are facilitated in-house at high schools and making sure that they're rigorous and they're accountable and that they match the college experience. So it's a really good shift from the state ed department. As you know, we have a number of dual enrollment courses here. We have ag mechanics, pre-vet, horticulture, environmental science, all through SUNY Morrisville. We have small animal care through SUNY Kobol Skill. We have natural disasters through SUNY Brockport. And we have French Four through MPCC. So it's just aligning those dual enrollment programs to make sure that they're rigorous and they match the college experience. So that's a proposed amendment that it will, has a sixty-day comment period through the state. And we're looking at January twenty-eighth of twenty-twenty-six for regulation if adopted by the Board of Regents. So that's forthcoming. NISID is working on its twenty-five through twenty-nine learning agenda framework to better align policy with data-driven research. So this is part of the broader research for policy, R4P initiative, which was launched in twenty-twenty-four by NISID. So that's aimed at embedding evidence into departmental decision-making at the state level. And then lastly, from a state level, is NISID plans to mandate financial literacy instruction in P-12 instruction through all public schools in New York State. So they're going to mandate, they're looking to mandate that all students are instructed in financial literacy, which we work on a little bit through personal finance. But I know there's a lot of questions regionally because that only touches the students that sign up for personal finance. So how is that going to be launched and delivered to every student across the continuum? So I know there's discussions at the state level. I know there's discussions with Mr. Arquette at the regional level about how that's going to be rolled out. So that's forthcoming. And also climate studies and climate instruction is going to be embedded across all curriculum. So those are the updates from the state ed.
So in regards to the financial literacy, one of the sessions we went to, I think it was last year at the school board convention, was about actually like a free program that they go through and it's all grade levels. Is that, I know it's not like a full long, but is that something that we may be able to look at a little bit further?
There's a next-gen learning standards for financial literacy that goes across all grade levels, elementary, middle, and high.
I'll send you, I'll find the information and send it. It was really, really great.
Sure. Yep. Any questions?
Matt's on deck already.
He's ready. Look at him, he's ready.
It's always scary when he's that ready.
What do you think, everybody? Just two quick things. Next month at our October ninth board meeting, we will have the auditors here, five o'clock preceding the board meeting for the most exciting hour of your board member year. So we're wrapping up financials from the twenty-four, twenty-five this year and we'll have all that prepared for you and out to you before the October ninth meeting. So all indications, all positive, all good news. I do have, for the first time in months, sort of a substantial update on the electric bus, our electrification study process. We will have representatives onsite next week, Tuesday, Wednesday, and possibly Thursday, from Polera, which is the company that the state has contracted with through NISERTM to conduct our electrification study. So if you recall, we were sort of at a standstill. We conducted our fleet study, which was complete. And we were waiting Polera to be freed up to come here to now take the information based on our fleet and our anticipated fleet size and our electric bus purchases to really dive into the electrification side of things and the infrastructure and the service that we have to the site. So we had a kickoff meeting a couple of weeks ago with representatives from the Village of Hamilton because all of our power is provided through the village utility, which is a good thing for us. There are districts that in some cases have multiple garages, multiple site locations, and have different utilities. So that's good for us that it's exclusively the Village of Hamilton. So we'll have people here onsite doing walkthroughs, meeting with Randy, with Maura, myself, and figuring out based on that fleet study what infrastructure upgrades, if any, are needed and start to look at site plan and site layout, which becomes a vital part of the ultimate site plan. And we sort of, we're keeping that in mind and as we navigate this with electric school buses, the timing of things will hopefully line up in a convenient way for us and we'll be ready to move forward. So there haven't been any, anything lifted as far as the time restrictions for school districts. As I've said in the past, they're not going to because that will inform progress. But the timeline is aggressive. It's probably a bit unrealistic. And there's other factors that are influencing districts' ability to convert to EVs. But we're on our way. So I would anticipate after the site visits next week, it'll probably be a month or two until we get reports back. But just to move forward. Questions?
Thanks.
Thank you.
It's always scary when you're short with your reports.
I'm sorry?
It's always scary when you're short with your reports.
And come up in water?
No, it's not. Just needed a second. And now for the first student board report. Call yours.
Good evening. As we wrap up the first full week of school, I'd just like to give a quick update on how the first few days have been. So overall, everything has been running pretty smoothly. People are settling into their daily routines, so that's good. One of the most talked about topics amongst the students is the new phone policy, of course. Some students are frustrated, of course, with not being able to use their phones or personal devices during study hall or during lunch. However, according to other students and myself, we've been connecting more with our peers and talking to people that we don't usually talk to in our classes, which is a positive shift. And of course, there will be an adjustment period, but we are still trying to navigate the change and it's going well so far. I also have a few ideas on how we can improve inclusion, school culture, and student voice. I believe it would strongly benefit the students by having a volunteer guest speaker, maybe every month or every two months, come in and give mini presentation on their career. So each month, there'd be a new person from a different career. So this would just give students more information on their future and give them more opportunities and options in general. So this would be maybe fifteen, twenty minutes during forum. And it'd be someone from the Hamilton community. This would include Colgate or anyone that would like to volunteer. And I think that would be really nice and. And I think that would be really nice in giving students options for their future. I would also like to focus on advertising clubs more for new students. I've noticed a lot of new students this year. I know that we have new students every year. But a lot of them don't really know about the clubs that we have at Hamilton. Like, they know of them, but they don't really know the depth of those clubs. So I think maybe a club fair would be nice. So the leaders of each club would make a poster and just give details on the clubs. So I think this would be really beneficial to new students. I.
Maybe also to like a fifth grade, so that they would know what they're coming up to. More sixth grade, whether that's what is not involved or.
I was also thinking of maybe putting a bulletin board up in the hallway or cafeteria with prompts like, what's one thing you want to change about this school, to really emphasize the student voice and give everyone a chance to make sure that their voice matters and just give them the opportunity to speak up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good ideas.
Thanks for being here on the board and for coming with such great first ideas. And I know the admin team, we're all taking notes, so it'll be exciting to see where those ideas land. So thank you very much. I can see.
We had our first school board institute meeting this week. Jim Van Warmer has retired, so that was the biggest news about all of it. So they are transitioning a little bit. So right now, it's two of the secretaries and the deputy superintendent that's keeping it going right now while that search is open. So if you know of anybody, they're really looking at like retired superintendent or something to take that over. But you're not there yet. So yeah, if anybody has any ideas, they are looking for somebody to do that. And this is the first year in a really long time. They have all eligible districts as a part of the school board institute. So that hasn't been the case in a really long time. So that's exciting to be able to get voices all together in a room from all thirty-five districts. The superintendent merger for Madison and Stockbridge is going really well. They talked a lot about that transition and how that's going. Regionalization came up a lot, and the whole EV bus thing was a huge topic of discussion again. And there were some ideas with the regionalization to maybe have more of a focus on transportation since this is going to be a challenge for all districts. And also, a big thing that came up was distance learning. Instead of trying to figure out how's this kid going to get from this school to this school and really through COVID, I think we learned a lot. A lot of districts set up like really great distance learning rooms and things like that. So that was an opportunity that a lot of people had said that they would like to explore more. On September sixteenth, sorry, September eighteenth, there is a general membership meeting. Heather Cole from Farrara and Ferenza will be giving a legal update and overview. So I do plan to attend that if anybody else is interested in that. They were, they talked a little bit about the student ex-fisio training and how really trying to get everybody to attend that, so hopefully you're able to go to that. They were really excited about that and getting all the students in one room and really being able to make connections and collaborate. So that's exciting. And then I will be on a call tomorrow morning with Congressman Mannion and in the afternoon with Senator Schumer. So Matt, Bill, I'll talk to you for a brief second. We literally have a half hour with both of them. And I think there's like ten of us on the call. So any statements will be short and sweet, so anything that we have that's really impactful that speaks for our district would be really great information to have.
I think it's from President.
Oh, perfect. So awesome. So that's a really great opportunity, I think, to have faces be seen and to be able to have time with them. A couple other general membership meetings. January 5th, we have asked for that to be added and have a presentation on Portrait of a Graduate. That was a big interest for a lot of people. And that's, that was a lot of it. Oh, and the resolution book. Did everyone get the resolution book?
Yes.
Okay. If everyone could go through that and just give me like your yes or no's and then I'll put those together for the annual meeting. That would be great.
Thank you. Athletics was in writing. Any specific questions or comments there? Just amazing numbers as what I took from the chat.
Yeah.
We have a lot of students doing a lot this year, so, for the fall. So it's very impressive with the size of our district. And even hearing on the sidelines of some of those sports, teams are either combining or not having seasons, and yet we have, almost have a numbers problem. And I'm glad we don't have a problem, but we have such large teams. Thank you for all the work behind the scenes on all of that. That brings us to our participation for the public. Remember the rules for the podium and welcome to the podium now if you would like. Seeing nobody can jump at that, we will be going into executive session after our board picture. And so we'll take that tonight for the yearbook and for our website, and we'll do that. And so we're going to take a fifteen-minute break for going into exec. So I need a motion to enter into executive session after the fifteen-minute recess. Please.
Remove.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all for coming. For those of you that came for class, you guys actually came for a very good, interesting night. It was long, wasn't it?